Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting. Tonight, Monday, February 23rd. We will begin -- oh, the meeting is being recorded for LCTV and is being livestreamed?
Yeah.
Okay, that part wasn't added. That's why I'm like, did we not livestream this time? So it should be being livestreamed as well. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all. The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. So to begin this evening, we'll start with Mr. Tom Landers to give an update on what's going on at LHS.
Better question is, what's not going on at LHS?
Let's let him talk about what is first.
Good evening. Marie Doyle asked us at various schools to give updates on the positive happenings, and we have been engaging in some vertical planning and hopefully improved transition between the eighth grade and high school, and I asked if I could give a quick update on that. So that's what it is. I want to acknowledge quickly the work of our guidance counselors and the guidance counselors at the middle school, Donna Lyons, the director of guidance, and Bridget Duley, guidance counselor at Glenbrook Middle School, and Mary Morrissey, guidance counselor at Williams Middle School, who came up with that idea of sort of a formal step update. And I'll talk a little bit about that. But I would just say, since the beginning of the year, our teachers, our department chairs have been working with the middle school coordinators and the teachers at the middle school to look at what we do, how we do it, and if we could get more information into the hands of teachers and students and parents and guidance counselors and make the transition a better one. There's been a lot of work involved in curriculum, looking at Common Core, the potential transition from MCAS to Park. As you know, the Common Core has affected, has more of an impact in the math curriculum in the sense that the math has been pushed down, so that transition has been ongoing for several years, but they continue to do work in that area. And they've done a lot of work on vertical transition and have good conversations and dialogue about things like, what are appropriate prerequisites as students try to move up and to take Algebra I or geometry or Algebra II, depending on where they are in their math career. But a lot of work has gone on since the beginning of the year in that area. And today, we took the next step, which we invited all the eighth graders from the two middle schools to LHS between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m., and they met us, they saw the physical facility, they met our department chairs, they got to listen to administrators and meet counselors, and we talked to them about the opportunities that they're going to have, the choices that they're going to make for their schedules. We talked about the concept of balance. We asked them to consider if they're going to be playing a fall sport in the high school in the fall. We asked them if they were going to be a music student, and if they were, if they were going to have a night commitment, as many of our music classes do, not all, but many. We asked them, we informed them about all the clubs. We have over 40 clubs, active clubs at LHS, which we talked to them a little bit about today, and we asked them to consider if they were going to be involved in those clubs. And we asked them to consider their areas of strength, their passions, and their areas of interest, and to go back and take the information that we gave them today, talk to their parents, talk to their teachers, talk to their guidance counselor, because they're going to start the process of scheduling this week. And I think it went well. We got good feedback from the counselors, and again, the guidance counselors and the administrators, Chris Collins and Nicole Allen, were very helpful in planning this. And lastly, I would say on Wednesday night, we'll continue the tradition that has been going on for years, have our eighth grade parent night. So in addition to meeting with the students, we'll meet with eighth grade parents. It's open to all incoming ninth grade parents, but it's particularly helpful to parents who have never had a student at the high school, and we try to alleviate fears and give them information and walk them through the difference between the levels, what it means to be in an honors course, what it means to be in a second level or third level, what the expectation for homework is going to look like, what time management consideration should be taken into place, into consideration. And after they meet us for about a 20-minute presentation in the auditorium on Wednesday night, we will break out and we have tabletop presentations in the cafeteria. And parents get to visit and meet face-to-face with teachers and department chairs, and ask questions, and hopefully alleviate any anxieties that they have, but leave more informed than they came. So we have a full-court press going on in terms of making the transition for eighth graders better. I just want to acknowledge quickly some people who have been particularly diligent in this area this year. In English, Mark Cormier, our department chair, and Anita Kimble, six to eight coordinator for English, have been working. In many cases, Mark and Anita have communicated and met and chatted, and in some cases, they've also included teachers, and that's applicable to everyone that I'm going to mention. In math, Meredith Laughlin and Suze Newton have worked together. Social studies, Megan Schwartz and J.R. Goland. And in science, Jamie DeBurn and Pam Novak. There's also been communication between art and music, and rural language as well. But the subjects of ELA, math, social studies, and science have done a lot of formal meeting and a lot of formal work on curriculum and vertical planning. So I just wanted to update the committee on that. We're proud of that. We hope that it helps our students make more informed decisions. One of the things that we want to avoid is, we have a lot of, we have students oftentimes who come in and they're excited, and they may take a course, and they might have to change their schedule in late September, early October. We want to avoid that. They have to, that will have repercussions for the rest of their schedule. So we, I think we've done a good job historically, but this was an area that was identified by our school councils. This is an area that was identified by our guidance counselors at both levels. So this is an area we wanted to focus on and improve. So hopefully, that will result from the steps that we've taken.
I'd like to thank Tom for his work in communication and transitions. I think one of the things we've talked about is how to help eighth graders become more acclimated to the high school. So this is one area that you've really focused on. In addition, I think parents at the high school notice that Tom's been putting out newsletters, plus he and his team have been sending articles to the Long Meadow News, which has really enhanced the community's awareness of the great things happening at the high school. So I appreciate all that you're doing in that area. It's really helping out, I think. We have an outstanding high school. It's nice to see people understanding why it is so special.
And I know, Tom, before we started the meeting, there were some questions about students who might be in private school this year who would be transitioning to LHS next year. So could you share that information with the public since we're being televised?
So the scheduling process for all eighth graders in Long Meadow, public or private school, will start this week. And we started today's step-up program as a pilot with the two public middle schools. We did have some students from St. Mary's and Heritage Academy attend today, but next year, we'll expand that formally to every school. Number one, and number two, no matter if you're in a public school or a private school, the guidance counselors are going to visit all schools. We do that every year, and they'll start that scheduling process. It will start for the middle schools this week, and then right after that, they will visit all private schools. And as a reminder to parents, all eighth graders will get a hard copy of our Educational Opportunities book, but you also can access it now online on our LHS website. But that's an ongoing process, and we include all students.
And Wednesday night is welcome for any parent of a rising ninth grader?
Absolutely. Eighth grade parent night is open to any incoming ninth grader from any school.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Tom? All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
And I am going to just switch the agenda just a bit, because we have another presentation, or short presentation, I guess, an introduction to Mr. Andy Churchill, who is the director of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. We had received information about member agreements for the LPVEC back in, I believe, one of our December packets? So it's been a while, and we're going to have to vote on that this evening, but I know some of you haven't met or don't know Andy, so we thought this would be a great opportunity. So, Andy, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, for those of you who don't know me, I'm the new Anne McKenzie. Been on the job since July, so I can only claim that for so long. But prior to coming here, I was, been working in education in the Pioneer Valley for quite a while. I was, ran a school-to-career partnership at the collaborative in Northampton for several years. I've been at the UMass Amherst Center for Education Policy for about 14 years. The last three of those, I was also the readiness center director for the Pioneer Valley. And I was a member of the Amherst School Committee for six years and chair for four, so I am a recovering member of a school committee. But I salute you, and I understand where you're coming from. And part of the reason that I'm excited about being part of the collaborative is that we exist to help you do things collectively with other districts more effectively and efficiently than you could do them on your own. So our mission is to help school districts serve all their students more effectively, efficiently, and equitably. And as I, as you may know, the other districts that are members are Agawam, East Long Meadow, Hamden Wilbraham, Ludlow, Southwick Tolland, Granville, and West Springfield. So I'm here basically just to say hello. It's a great opportunity to get out and meet all the school committees in our member districts. This is the seventh. It was scheduled to be the fifth, but weather intervened, so here we are. So I just want to take the opportunity to just, you know, very quickly remind you what a collaborative is about, what our collaborative does, and then talk to you about the collaborative agreement, which is the basis on which we operate, and it sort of codifies our partnership. So collaboratives have existed in Massachusetts since 1974. They came into being originally to support districts in meeting special education obligations with the new special education legislation that came about at that time. They've since expanded to support member districts in a variety of ways. There are now 26 collaboratives in Massachusetts. The other one in our region is the collaborative in Northampton, which serves districts in Hampshire and Franklin Counties. Our collaborative has, do you have this handout? Is this in your packet? I don't know. Is this the one? Actually, I can give you this one, so I'm not just reading, and you can just, it'll save us all time. Just about eight copies for anyone. So that's coming around. Basically, we offer a variety of collaborative programs and services that the members have been historically interested in. So we have a career tech program up on Brush Hill in West Springfield. It's unique in that it's a half-day program, so students can retain their membership in their home district, they can do sports, they can, you know, do all the extracurricular things that go with membership in a community, but they can spend half the day in a state-of-the-art technical facility where we have 13 shops at the moment, and we are planning to implement a 14th next fall, which will be in precision machining, precision machining manufacturing. We also have special education programs, and we provide those in a variety of settings, including one in Glenbrook Middle School. And those are for a variety of learning and developmental conditions, excuse me. We also have school busing, school transportation, sorry. Do you have, is there some?
I don't.
Thank you. I think I can carry on. We have school transportation services, which serve regular ed for five of our districts and special ed for six of our districts. We have municipal Medicaid reimbursement, so that, we have somebody who has sort of her own software that she's developed that, for whatever reason, she enjoys finding the money in the couch cushions that otherwise would go unclaimed for Medicaid reimbursement. So she goes out and does the work of identifying special education costs that are federally reimbursable, and goes after them and secures large amounts of funding for participating districts and municipalities. Thank you. We also do have Paul, who does group energy purchasing and energy management, handles natural gas and electricity for multiple municipalities and districts. We have job-alike groups where individuals from our participating member districts, superintendents, curriculum directors, business managers, special education directors, get together on a regular basis to talk shop and exchange ideas and sometimes put together grant proposals. And then we have a variety of other curriculum assessment-related services, professional development, data analysis. We host the District and School Assistance Center, the DSAC, from the Department of Ed. Recently, those folks who work part-time for the DSAC and part-time for the collaborative did a data analysis project for your administrative team here. They were able to take the state data and analyze it and then present it to your administrators and staff in ways that were specifically tailored to your district. So that's sort of a quick summary of what we, the kinds of things we do, but we're always looking for other things that the members have a common interest in pursuing. One other thing we're waiting to hear on is some math professional development through the Mount Holyoke Summer Math Program. We have a grant in that Long Meadow is a partner in that, and it will pay for teachers to do advanced math professional development at Mount Holyoke in the summer if it comes through. So that's the kind of thing that we're looking to do, and always looking for new opportunities to bring together for the member districts. So the reason I'm here tonight is basically a bureaucratic technicality, which is always nice. But there was one collaborative in the northwestern, northeastern part of the state got in some financial trouble about some number of years ago. As a result, in 2012, the legislature passed legislation that required all educational collaboratives to revise their agreements to make sure that it was clear how they operated. And so as a result, we have done that. The department created a model collaborative agreement. They also, we also had our existing agreement, which was from 19...
Eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight. And subsequently, it was a minor amendment since then. And we also took a look at an approved collaborative agreement from the Northampton Collaborative as we were pulling together what would be approved by the state. So what's listed here is the elements of a collaborative agreement, and then the process is listed at the bottom. So first, we had to go back and forth with the department multiple times until we had something that was agreeable to them and met the elements of the statute according to their analysis. Then we had to bring it to our board of directors, which includes one member from each of the member school committees. And now I've been going around to each of the member school committees to get the signature of their chair on the agreement. So once I have all seven, we will have a finalized agreement, which is basically an excuse for me to come out and see all of you, which is nice. And I'll have this off my desk, which will also be nice. So, yeah. Basically, we really did take the old agreement, put the parts of that in the sections of the model agreement wherever it fit. And in the finance section, we basically took the Northampton Collaborative's already-approved section. We took out CES, we put in LPVEC, we took out membership dues, because we don't charge membership dues, and it is what it is. So we've been, we've, I've taken it to, let's see, I have five signatures so far, presented to six places, and I expect the sixth signature soon. There have been a couple of questions that have been raised along the way about whether we want to tweak the language here or there, but some of those, some of those questions came up about after we already had four signatures from four school committees. So what I've been saying since then is, if we agree together after we submit this, that there are further amendments or improvements that we want to make, I'm happy to come around again and get seven more signatures on an amended, on any amendments that you want to make. But the lawyers that have looked at it have said that this does pass muster in terms of the requirements of the collaborative agreement, and they're basically satisfied. Everybody has one or two things that they might suggest for further improvements, and I'm happy to discuss that if people want to. But basically, what I'm here for is to say hi and to get a signature if I can.
Go ahead. We'd like to welcome you, Andy. You've been a nice addition to the team. In terms of the agreement, we did run it by our lawyer. It's funny, because one of our lawyers helped write it for you, so we had our other team of lawyers look at it. The one thing that they brought up in that we also ran into the issue is budget time. The due date for your budget is pretty late, so we're wondering if you could bring it back to the team and ask about maybe a January 5th due date for the budget, because our budget rests on the development of yours, and we can't plug in our numbers. So that was, I think, the only thing that we had a question about in terms of the agreement.
And that, this is my first time going through a budget, and I, we've discussed it a little bit already. I'm happy to make that part of our process regardless.
Good.
And, you know, if we need an amendment to go into the agreement, we can, I can bring that around. But, you know, my goal next year would be to have it ready for you by the beginning of the year.
Fantastic. Okay, great.
Anyone else have questions or comments for Andy regarding the agreement, or what they do, or anything? All right. So, could I have a motion?
I move. I move that the school committee accept the Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative member agreement dated September 2014.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor?
Yeah.
So unanimous, right?
Yeah.
Is that what you saw?
Did your motion have to allow you to sign it? Should I?
Oh, I'm like a subsequent motion.
Okay.
To amend the last motion, right, because we just passed that. Authorizing the chair to sign on behalf of the committee.
Second.
All right, so, motion in a second, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, we're at the boardroom.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the water. Getting me over a cold, and it caught me at the wrong time.
It'll be frozen before you get home.
Really?
Frozen before it gets too hard.
Thanks for coming, Andy. We appreciate it.
Would've been here sooner, but we've all been, it's been quite a winter.
Hasn't it?
Somebody was asking if the cold was going to make anybody cancel tomorrow, and I'm like, no way.
No, Joseph was asking.
It would've earlier.
Right, no.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks a lot.
For people watching, there will be a full day of school tomorrow.
All right, so correspondence.
Quite a bit of correspondence. An emailed letter from Ms. Pamela Mahoney dated February 2nd, 2015, regarding her thoughts on busing. An emailed letter from Ms. Rebecca Thompson dated February 10th, 2015, regarding transportation in the fiscal year '16 budget. An emailed letter from Ms. Amy Appel dated February 10th, 2015, regarding funding a full-time school adjustment counselor. An emailed letter from Ms. Caitlin Cronin dated February 10th, 2015, regarding transportation. An emailed letter from Ms. Kathy Reese dated February 10th, 2015, regarding transportation. And an email letter from Ms. Rebecca Powell dated February 11th, 2015, requesting more information regarding staffing reductions in the fiscal year '16 budget.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from our visitors this evening? Okay. All right, would you like to go on with your report?
Sure. I'd like to start by saying that the Special Programs Committee is going to have our first event in March, on March 10th. We are having Professor Larry Snyder from Bay Path talk about internet safety. A notice went out to the community today, so mark your calendars, March 10th, 7 o'clock at the high school. The second thing is that there is a letter in front of you that is addressed to the Long Meadow community, and I would like to send this out, and I plan on sending this out to the community tomorrow. It's about redistricting. Earlier this year, we had an enrollment, an enrollment group that looked at current trends, population predictions for the next several years. Currently, Blueberry School is overcrowded, so it's my intention to expand a committee into an elementary redistricting committee that will include the presidents of the elementary PTOs, a parent representative from every elementary school council, school committee representation, parent representatives from impacted areas, the elementary principals, teacher representatives, the assistant superintendent for learning, the director of pupil services, and myself. So we will put this letter out to the community to let them know it's coming. I've also, on the letter, put in dates so that people know when the committees will be meeting. There will also be a public forum, and the public forum will be held on Wednesday?
Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Tuesday.
April 14th.
Tuesday, April 14th, and then we'll follow up with a meeting after that so that the committee can assess what feedback we have from the community. The details are in the letter, so I just ask if there are any questions or clarification that you might like at this point.
Well, Marie, do you mind?
Feel free.
Thank you. You know, obviously, looking, having had a chance to review the letter, I would, just go circle out.
Yeah, made new ones.
Okay, good. I think it's, you know, I think obviously we should be very clear to the community right now, before this process begins, that the scope of the redistricting is not townwide, but rather, it is very limited to alleviate the population overcrowding at Blueberry Hill School.
At the elementary?
At the elementary schools, yeah.
Right.
And that it's more so included in the letter targeted at specific streets. So, you know, obviously, this is going to be a long-term, or at least a longer conversation included over these dates, but that, you know, at least from the beginning of this process, we want to be very clear, and we should be very clear, that the majority of families in town will not be impacted by this. And that should just kind of be out there from the beginning, because, you know, obviously, I think that in the past, when there have been wholesale changes to where the lines are, it's, you know, and rightly so, caused a lot of public interest. And so, you know, obviously, I think we should quell as much fear as we can with the very specific streets.
And the letter will give you those streets. It's approximately 65 students that would be moved from Blueberry School to Center School is my proposal. It is going to be up to the committee to study this and make a recommendation back to me and school committee. The enrollment, the enrollment committee looked and looked at data, so that from that, I've come forward with some recommendations, but I think no few people should make such a major decision. We really need to hear from the community. This committee will be large so that we have representation, but Michael's right. The point is to move about 65 students from Blueberry to Center School, and then from, take the preschool and move it from Center School to Wolf Swamp, and that would help balance the enrollment, so.
So we're not looking at middle schools, the middle schools are not?
We talked about it with the administrative team, and we're not looking at middle schools right now, because Williams Middle School, even though it has 100 more students, it has a full team on the eighth grade that's handling some of that overpopulation. And if we were to rebalance them right now, it would mean that we'd have to put in two-person teams at a couple of the middle schools, at both of them, and that's not advantageous for learning. So we're going to hold off one year, and that's, that can be done in another phase. But right now, we don't think it's educationally wise to redistrict the middle schools.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just as a point of information, how long has it been since we redistricted?
What, 11, 12 years?
10 or 12 years, I think. Marie Pratt was telling you, it was like when she first started being, when she was...
If memory serves, it goes back to the early 1990s.
12 years.
And... And...
2002, 2003.
2002, okay, excuse me. This is a problem that has been growing and has been neglected by previous committees, and I'm glad that we're finally getting around to biting the bullet on it. It's not a popular proposal.
No.
Some people are going to be very upset about it, but it has to be done in the name of fairness and the public interest.
And I think the question was raised of when, why were the overcrowding most the last time we redistricted? I believe, but I've been told, that the last redistricting took place when fifth grade moved from the middle schools back to the elementary school level, so.
In the neighborhood we're looking at, one of the last redistricting center was overcrowded, and students were shifted to Blueberry. And what's interesting now, it looks like the same neighborhood that used to be at Center will probably go back to Center. But again, we'll see what the committee says. But I do want the community to know that we understand people's commitment to their elementary schools and how much they love them, but all of our elementary schools are great, and if students do have to make a transition, we will do our best to make sure that there are transition plans, that there are dates set up for kids to visit schools so that it'll be very smooth. And regardless of what school they're at, they have great experience.
Just to be clear, just so that we're not, you know, there's no questions between now and the first meeting date when you establish this, we are proposing that students, regardless of their grade, move to a new school in the impacted neighborhoods.
I am suggesting that, and I think the committee's going to explore that. And what I did is I framed questions in this, because we don't have consensus across the board on whether or not... I think we have consensus that fifth grade students should stay in the school, even that Blueberry students should not be transferred for their last year. We do not have consensus...
Or did they have the option to stay?
The option. The question's asked, do siblings stay or go? The younger grades, at what grade do you say you have to move or you don't have to move? So those questions are going to go to the larger committee, so they're in this letter framed.
So essentially, we're just not ruling anything out?
We're not ruling anything out. I think I'd like to hear from the large committee to see what their opinions are, and I think we should weigh all the pros and cons and try and build consensus among the larger group. I think the enrollment committee's done a great job of looking at the information, trying to articulate what neighborhoods would cause the least disruption, and also where it would be easiest for kids to commute to a new school, so.
Okay. Are you looking for consensus on this?
I think I'm informing you that I'm going to put the letter out.
Oh, okay.
And wanted you to hear before it went out to the community.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want us to... Would you do any feedback?
Please. I'm going to send it out tomorrow, so please do send feedback tonight.
And Kim, I think in the letter, there's a specific email address that we could direct people to that'll get to the appropriate people. And then Diane, this letter, would that email be up on our website as well? Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay.
No problem.
So this letter will go up tomorrow?
It will.
While Blueberry's launching. Here.
I can promise you it'll be out by 8 o'clock tomorrow evening.
Okay.
Because I would put it out first thing in the morning, but if people are going to give me feedback, I think I'll give it the day to do that, so let's say by tomorrow at 8 o'clock in the evening, okay?
Okay.
Could I ask school committee to get back to me by maybe noon tomorrow?
Sure.
And that way I can edit and get the final copy out?
Yeah, I was just going to look at this, because I know students have made some recommendations, but I...
Okay.
Nice.
So if you get to me by noon, I can work on that, because the other thing I'd like to do is now that we're talking about this, invite the players I mentioned on the committee. The PTO presidents need to know some school council reps, et cetera, that I put out the dates to them as well, so.
So by noon tomorrow, if anybody has commentary, anybody from the school committee has commentary for Marie. And if you're at home, you have to wait. All right, you want to continue?
My presentation, you want that now or later? The mid-year review?
We can do it now, why not?
Okay.
I'll just let you keep going.
All right.
What are you doing? What are you doing now?
Do you have the board, please?
So generally, we ask Marie to, you know, we do our goal setting and present that at the beginning of the year, and then, as any good managing group, we don't like to wait till the very end to surprise anybody with an evaluation without having talked about it partway through. So Marie will be providing us a mid-year update regarding her goals and where she stands and how things have been moving along thus far, so.
Oh, I got it. It's the red button. There we go.
And I'm going to move...
Yeah, I am too. And obviously, it's important to note that it's part of a four-part review process that I think principals and superintendent go through every year. Thanks to Desi.
It's a format, Desi, since we call up. Is that on, because I am not getting the...
It's on now.
There we go, okay. Move over one second, I'm not in the way.
You have an extra copy of all of that stuff? She doesn't have, like, the stuff that's on top of the packet? On the chair.
There should be another packet somewhere. Here's the PowerPoint, but you need the report.
I forgot the other, but I didn't get all the other stuff.
Here's the report. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. No, I have that, thank you. All right, it's been a very busy year, but we're excited to report halfway through what's happening in the district. In front of you, you have a report, and if you notice, it's two colors. The mid-year report has, in black, what I proposed in the beginning of the year that you approved for my goals, and the red is the comments that I've added to give you an update on where we're at. Just as a reminder, DESI comes out with a, has come out with a model that all superintendents to follow, and they give us three target areas: professional practice, student learning, and district improvement. So when you take a look at how my goals are set up, I've highlighted those three areas: professional practice, student learning, and district improvement.
For the benefit of our listeners, D E S C means...
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So first, professional practice, Goal A, was to improve the effectiveness of classroom observations with the administrative team. I think everyone's aware that we walk through the schools frequently. We go through, we visit classrooms, but we also target areas when we do those walkthroughs. So if you look attached to your packet, one of the goals was to improve the effectiveness, and we've done that by creating what's called a walkthrough checklist. And this walkthrough checklist was passed out in September. It's just been refined so that we've added more things to it so that when we walk through classrooms, we can observe what's happening, we can discuss what's going on. When we walk through a classroom, we're targeting usually literacy or math. We might be looking at what's going on in the specials that day. We've looked at the wind block, et cetera. So what are the milestones in this area? We've developed and implemented an assessment tool for classroom observations. We've scheduled visits to all schools and with appropriate administrators. For example, all the elementary principals come on a walkthrough to given elementary school, and we have identified targeted purposes for our visits. The second goal is student learning, and there were four categories under this. In September, identified that we would increase student achievement, we would develop school plans to raise student achievement, that we would create homework expectations for the district, and then D, explore online learning opportunities for students at high schools. So you have, first, I'll start with C. You have, again, in your packet, a draft of the homework expectations. This is an ongoing document. It started last summer, where I drafted and brought it to the administrative team and asked them to go back to the faculty to discuss it. It had come to my attention from various parents that expectations were different at different schools, and not only different schools. You could be in the fifth grade at one school and have one teacher giving 10 minutes of homework and another giving two hours. So I drafted this. We worked with the administrative team this summer during our retreat, and then they brought it back to the faculty. It's now been back to the faculty, I think, three times. We discussed it in September, they had another meeting, and I sent out an email asking for feedback. I got a lot of feedback, so while we hope to have this in place by October, it's still a working document until I feel like the staff's in a good place with it and the administration's in a good place. I think it's important to take time so that everybody feels ownership of this, but we're well on our way. So this is the most recent draft of the document based on the feedback I've had from everyone. We also are working on implementing Informant, a data management system. All the critical information has been loaded down, that's MCAS data, AMES web data, BASS, et cetera. This means that a principal or a teacher can look up a student and have all the data in one place. This is really instrumental, because if you get the MCAS scores back and you're worried about a young person, you can look to see, is our internal assessment also showing this struggling, or was this an anomaly and a bad testing day? We've also been able to download individual status around special education, if they're on 504, if they're an English language learner, et cetera. And we've also trained the administrative team on how to use it. As Andy said, we had some data specialists from the collaborative come over. We've met with them to talk about the templates that we wanted so that we could look at data quickly within the district. We use some of those templates to match up with what we're getting from the MCAS as well as inform. We provided training to introduce this product in July. We had people come back in September and October to work with us as well. So we brought on the experts. We also have assessed AMES web, BASS, ACT, SAT data. We've looked at that as a team to see how our students are doing and how we can increase achievement. Another area that we've done are DDMS, the District Determined Measures. This was an area that the state mandated last year that all grade levels have, all MCAS grade, I'm sorry, all grade levels need to have the district determined measures. If the grade level takes the MCAS, then the MCAS is one of the things that they absolutely have to use. So our elementary schools are using AMES web and MCAS. Their high school has developed some of their own data measures as well, the middle schools as well, and certain areas have developed their own, and some are using the MCAS and AMES web as well. So that's been done on a grade-by-grade, subject-by-subject basis. The wind block has been implemented. I think we're finding great successes in closing the achievement gap for our kids that struggle. We're still working on developing challenge curriculum. That's an area that we've highlighted for summer curriculum money to make sure that we're writing curriculum so that all kids are having their needs met. Goal B was to develop school plans to raise student achievement. The snow has really hindered our work in this area. All the principals have done their school improvement plans and are ready to bring them to you. Originally, we thought we'd do those early in the year, but the school councils were all at different places with the school improvement plans, so the principals asked and you agreed that they could come in January to present. They're ready to present, we just need some good weather and a sustained basis, and you'll have those presented to you. The homework expectations we just discussed, and then Goal D, to explore online learning opportunities for high school students. Tom Landers has done a phenomenal job in this area. We take a look, we've increased the amount of equipment at the high school so that students during ice blocks, that's areas where they do independent study, can sign a piece of equipment out if they don't have their own computer or technology device with them. We also are now a BYOD. Students can bring their own device to the high school. That's new this year. We've also talked with vendors about what programs can we bring on. Kathy, president of the LEA, is here, and I met with a representation from the MTA to develop a one-year plan for online learning agreement, and it's working very well. We've had our first class Mandarin in place, and we've agreed that the online learning opportunities can be those that are not currently offered in the high school or in a unique case where we have special needs for a student that we can meet through online learning. So we'll take a look at that, we'll continue work, and we'll discuss what courses might be added. For example, we've often had a few students that can go through our entire math program, so that'd be a nice opportunity to hook up with the college. For Mandarin, we've hooked up with Middlebury College, which is renowned throughout the country for their oral language program, so we're looking at opportunities like that to find some really high-level courses in science, math, et cetera, for our students that we don't currently offer here. The third area is district improvement. Goal A is to begin the process for securing a new middle school. B, develop new curriculum goals for technology. And C, increase communication throughout the district and community. Janet and I met last week. We had a conference call with a representative at the MSBA to talk about the SOI. We are moving forward. Tom's been going to be working with Chris Reed to take a look at updating some of the mechanical questions that we have around filling out the SOI. The bad news is they funded eight out of 105 projects last year, so the money continues to decrease. The competition is really stiff right now, but we will fill out the SOI. We will do our best to see what we can do to put ourselves in a good light, but the amount of funding is very limited right now. The deadline is in April, so we're beginning that work now. We're in good stead to make that. We have also developed a calendar where we work backwards, because part of the SOI process is to get it through school committee, then it has to go through the select board, and it has to make the April deadline, so that we'll be working on that pretty intensely over the next month.
And Marie, last year, they said that 15 out of 108 projects were funded, and back in 2012, she knew off the top of her head that 16 out of 280 projects were funded. So it's, and you don't know the competition that you're up against until that deadline when all of the project submissions are turned in.
What is interesting to note is that downward pattern, it's less and less schools they're funding, so that's not good news. Goal B is to develop new curriculum goals for technology. Sue's done a great job of bringing together our tech people. They've taken a look at the PARC test to see what expectations are. They definitely agree that we have higher expectations for our students in earlier grades, so they're reworking that curriculum right now. There's a calendar developed, there are agendas for meetings. They're writing curriculum right now as we speak, so we're ahead of the game, and they'll be presenting that hopefully by the end of the year to staff, students, and others. Goal C was to increase communication throughout the district and community. We've done several things in this area. First of all, we sent out the newsletter in October, and hopefully we'll get one out soon. We also have set up a calendar where we have articles going to the Long Meadow News every week. I set up a calendar, and administrators are sending at least three articles. Diane's overseeing that to make sure that we're getting them in. I think the Long Meadow News is giving us more press, which is good news, and we're trying to increase awareness of all the great work that's happening. We also have focused on more outreach to the community. We had a presentation on Common Core and PARC earlier this year, as well as we sent out a flyer on how to have a good conference. We talked about offering that as a workshop for parents, but the principals felt like there was nothing more they could add beyond the flyer, so they're going to try and highlight something later in the year. We have a committee organized to expand parent training programs and to look at mental health issues of kids. That's called the Special Programs Committee. As you know, the technology is the first piece that we've done right now, that will be March 10th. In addition, we've surveyed all, we've surveyed parents, we had over 300 responses. We also surveyed our students in grades four, five, all the way through grade 12, and we got very helpful information on that. So the committee is refining that information. We've broken it down. We've met with the administrative team to get their input, and we're looking to see how we can take that information and develop a three-year plan for bringing programs to the community. Additional work, we have, the budget is now completed. We've worked closely with the town. Tom's done a great job of presenting that. The technology updates, Kevin has put in new computer labs in the middle school that were just completed last week. He's also completed new servers in the town that's been an ongoing project on the town side. We're delighted with the amount of technology in it, and we'll continue to work on that. One of the goals for this year is actually to have conversations about making a BYOD, which is bring your own device to the middle schools, because we think we're ready now that we can empower our students at that grade, at that level as well. We now are doing two years' worth of calendars. The high school actually were the catalyst for that conversation, because they're having problems getting Symphony Hall on good nights, and if we can do a two-year calendar, then they can book ahead. It's worked well, because it gives us a better sense of what the district's doing. We have aligned some of our staff development to dates that other districts are using as well, so that we can share some staff developers and save expenses. So that's an exciting initiative happening next year as well. as well. The enrollment study, now you've heard just about the redistricting, so all that is happening as well. So it has been an exciting year. It's been a very productive year. I think when we take a look at our growth in the areas of technology, when we take a look at the wind block and the success of that, and some of the other initiatives underway, we're in good stead right now. So I'll open it up for questions at this point.
All I can say is, wow, you've been busy. And you haven't even included everything that was on there. And I must say, I do like the graphics. It's a reminder of what grass really looks like. So...
Probably I grabbed it.
In the next three months? I'm betting the last snowbank melts by the last day of school. That's my bet. So. Any questions for Marie or comments about her goals versus where she is this year?
Well...
Please feel free.
Sure. You know, obviously coming from last year when we had a lot and they were very like A or B, you know, sort of, you know, you could either did or you didn't. I think that the way that we establish what your goals would be this year is much more conducive to, you know, kind of thoughtful evaluation in a sense. And the only other thing I would say is that looking through the list of all the things that you've completed so far is very impressive, quite honestly. You know, obviously, some of these things are going to continue to be ongoing, but we've gotten, you know, one of the things that I know we'd mentioned in your, in either the goal-setting session or your review is we love updates more frequently. Well, tonight, we got an update on enrollment study. Shortly, we're going to have an update on the calendars. You update us on technology. So, you know, I think the list of things that you've set for yourself this year have been completed in a long, you know, very, very...
And not only what was set initially, but the things that have gotten added in throughout the year. The enrollment studies, the transportation, the, we're in negotiations here, budget, and all of those things that, and special programs was something new this year that wasn't on the initial goal setting. So there have been a lot of things added that are being worked on that you highlighted in addition to what was just set. And Michael, to your point of the new evaluation system, last year, after evaluation, we looked at adopting the DESE suggested model for, you know, setting goals and evaluating. So that's when we worked on goal-setting, we kind of followed the framework of that, of setting specific goals, but then also being able to evaluate, you know, day-to-day operations without having to put that in there. So...
Not having 99 indicators.
Yeah.
Which I think is more manageable.
Exactly. Kim, did you have something?
Well, I was actually looking for more information on the SOI because I know that just through offline conversations, there was a committee that was formed, but I don't know about any of the research that was done about the decision as to what's going to be pushed and asked for.
It's being worked on?
And with the April deadline, feels like we're going to be really rushed.
The committee does have a lot of work to do, but budget was definitely a priority. Negotiations is definitely a priority. The nice thing is that we do have SOIs that were filed at the same time that the high school SOI was filed. So a lot of that data, they don't ask for a whole lot of new data. It's historical data. One were roofs last replaced, one were repairs last done, one were the boilers last replaced. So a lot of it can be reused. So it's a matter of kind of tweaking and reworking some of it.
So there was some research that was done that we're going to see that shows why we want to do one middle school versus repairing the two middle schools and all that?
We will. Once, a lot of the work we've been doing, for example, the enrollment study and getting projections on enrollment, that's all part of this. So we have a lot of pieces. This matters me putting it together right now so you can see it. It's, you have to always update what repairs you've done to the building. You have to prove you've taken care of it as well. We have a lot of that in place. We've tried to divide the work so that we can get this together pretty quickly and report back.
Yeah. The statement of interest process is less of an, you know, opportunity to push for a specific agenda and more of an opportunity to articulate our general needs. When the MSBA decides whether they're going to move forward with a building project or whatever, they'll invite us to conduct a feasibility study. The town has to pay for that and approve it like they did with the high school. And, you know, ultimately, that's the opportunity for feasibility, for a consolidated middle school to be an outcome of feasibility, which will most likely be the outcome given the enrollment decline.
And that's well said, because the MSBA will be the ones who will actually tell us whether or not they'll fund one, the idea of consolidation. For people who are watching, I would like to ask to explore the option of having one middle school, to build one new one and combine them and free up one of these spaces. I think to have a middle school of about 600 to 700 is ideal. You can have more opportunities for kids. You can have more electives. There's more flexibility in the schedule. It's more cost-efficient to do that. But the MSBA is requiring that we do an SOI in each of the schools right now, that we can't just go with one plan. We have to proceed the way it was. And then, as Michael said, that feasibility study will look at everything. They'll look at sites. They'll look at costs. And there'll be studies of the building the way they are now. So if we're chosen to move ahead, there's a lot of work that goes into the next phase. This is just the initial, let them know how bad the building is and they'll consider whether they'll take us or not.
So did we put a SOI in for both?
Yep.
We have to do both.
Oh, and it's not done yet. And who's on the committee? Because I didn't even know we had...
That's the middle school working group. That's Katie, John, Joseph's the student representative, and me with Marie. And I think, you know, we need to very clearly articulate to the community at large that, like Marie said, our filing an SOI is just a first step and may not even take us anywhere after the application. Out of, you know, like with the numbers that they had given us when they're telling us that 108 applicants last year and only 12 were funded, I think, you know, 108 applicants, 15 were funded. It's, you know, and the representative from MSBA said, you know, one of those being funded was because students were being evacuated from the building because of, you know, overcrowding and conditions that would not even support learning. So...
And they fund like half? What do they pay?
They do it based on the socioeconomics of the town. For the high school, we got just under 50%. So I'd assume we'd commit at the same ratio.
So, you know, it's not to panic anyone saying, oh, my God, they're starting to build a new middle school next year. It's, this is the first of a very long process, a very time-consuming and fact-finding process that we just feel that it's, you know, due diligence with the conditions of both of our middle schools that we need to at least start.
Well, I think it's important to just kind of keep in mind that it's not a secret to anybody that the condition of our middle schools warrants review and warrants us to, you know, to approach the state for help and looking towards what the future of those buildings is going to be like. And quite honestly, anything that we need to do or want to do with these buildings, you know, really kind of falls back and gets hinged, you know, kind of caught up in, well, what are you going to do with the middle schools? Like, that's a conversation that we have with capital every year. So, you know, it's important for us to be able to kind of make a decision about what's, where are we spending good money after bad? And, you know, where can we be putting town resources to better use? And quite honestly, it seems like every department is articulating its needs these days. And so, you know, we should be, we should be there with them. And that's not to say that we should have a new middle school tomorrow, but it is to say that we should get the ball rolling.
Absolutely.
So do we want to pick a date for the working group? I think what I can do next week is outline, and we've broken down some of that, but it would be good to get the working group together to just talk about what we're going to do and where we're headed.
Did you want to talk about dates now or do you want to wait till offline and the group can meet instead of meeting date?
Yeah, if everyone just stays afterwards, it would probably be good to do that now so we can get a focus.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments from Marie regarding her new year's presentation? Okay. Well, thank you very much for that. Sometimes it's hard to think of all the things, the good things that we get done and are being accomplished when we get bogged down in day-to-day. So it was nice to see how much we've gotten done. Thank you. All righty. Joseph, do you have any report for us?
I want to do it.
Oh, of course you do.
Nothing really big, but first I'd like to congratulate our swimming, our swim and dive team. Girls swim and dive, Western Mass, second place. State, fourth place. And boys, Western Mass, first place. State's ninth place. So some really impressive championships there. Upcoming, we have playoffs starting this week. So we, as Mr. Landers mentioned, we have eighth grade parent night on Wednesday. We also have boys varsity basketball, seven o'clock. Boys varsity hockey, Thursday, six o'clock at Olympia Ice Center. And girls varsity basketball, Friday at seven o'clock at the high school. That covers the playoffs that are starting this week. The school committee, Student Advisory Council, we're hoping to meet with you guys at our, at the March 23 meeting to discuss the things that we were going to discuss at our last meeting, that got canceled because of snow. We're still working on some surveys. We're still working on electronic report cards. We're still working on after-school snacks with Whitsons. And we're still working on our website explaining student government at LHS. Last year, we talked about Step Up Day, and that was one of the things that we suggested. As Mr. Landers reported, it did happen today. The other great thing, and I've reported on this in the past, is Ms. Golden, who runs our website at the high school, did a great job taking the Educational Opportunities booklet and turning it into like a website of just like downloading the pages in. So that combined with Step Up Day and the things we've always had with our eighth grade parent night and obviously orientation, I think are all great steps in the right direction. So those are all the things we're working on and hopefully we'll be able to have our meeting. Unless we'll have another snow day at the end of the year.
No more snow days.
At the end of...
It's got to have to be real deep. Real deep snow.
Yes. So yeah, good luck to all our teams. And also, I'm trying to get the link up on the high school's website, but the lacrosse team, the boys lacrosse team was selected for some kind of competition. Basically, I sent you all an email with the link and it hopefully will be on the high school's website where the community can go online and we can vote. It's like a poll. And if we win, we advance to the next round. And if we win that, the lacrosse team gets sponsored, new equipment, new helmets for free.
Long Meadow Biz also has that on their Facebook page right now.
Perfect. So do I.
I put it on mine as well.
Yeah, I think as I last checked, we're currently by something smaller than our votes. So if we win, that'd be pretty cool.
Yeah, would they?
New helmets for the lacrosse team is awesome.
And you said they're sponsored?
I didn't really look into it that much. I don't know. I think it's some kind of like sponsorship. I don't think they're just giving away helmets free, but...
Warrior Regulator 2?
Yes.
I don't want to be a wet blanket on this, but we might have to talk about that if they win.
Well, if they win, then we'll have that conversation.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, I mean, we might have to amend the policy is all.
Didn't look into how it works, but I hope we can have that discussion. It's something we'll be getting them.
Right now, we're behind.
Everybody go vote.
Everyone go vote.
Yep. That's everything that we're working on. And if, of course, if any students or community members or community members have any questions or things they'd like me to work on, I email us on the website.
All right. Anything for Joseph?
He covered it all.
Come on, we need to give him some work to do or something.
Yeah. All I've been doing is playing sporting games.
He has these snow days with nothing to do.
No. Full day of school tomorrow.
That's right. That's right.
That's right. Doesn't matter how cold it is.
All right. Thank you, Joseph. Finance sub? Tom, did you want to?
Last time we met, which was January 29, that meeting was dedicated completely to the FY '16 budget, which has now been presented and approved. So we are meeting again, we meet next on this Monday, Thursday, for some real business.
And our budget has been presented to the town finance committee and to the select board's finance subcommittee. So I believe that everybody has been well-informed. John, are there any legislative updates that you know of?
Nope. Nothing to report.
All right. Liz, anything about green?
No.
Michelle, operations?
I got a few.
Seal?
You'll do it if you want. That's fine.
You can keep it. I'll stop.
All right. Excuse me.
Policy sub, I know you met this evening.
Yes, we met this evening. For inclusion in the next packet, we did approve for, or we did recommend Policy Section JII, which is a revision of the Students Complaints and Grievances policy. We also approved some minutes. We also, at our last meeting, and I'm not sure, I can't remember because we've had so many meetings this month, but we approved several policies for...
For first review?
For first reading, which I don't know if I ever told, okay, I'll give you the minutes that we approved tonight so you can include in the next packet. But several of them, including, we did Policy Section JH, which is student absences and excuses. We made amendments to that for the next meeting. We tabled Policy Section ADF, which is student wellness, in light of the current wellness policy, total wellness review and health program review. We also tabled Policy Section EEAEC, or also known as JICC, student conduct on school buses, as well as EEAE, which was walkers and riders. So those are coming down the pipe. But for the packet, the next time, we will have Policy Section JCCD, which is domestic violence leave policy, which speaks to the conditions under which, should that be necessary, and we would hope it is never necessary, that that would take place.
So we'll have three for first review next time?
Yeah.
JII, JH, and JCCD?
Yeah, I think those are all the right letters.
Okay. Enrollment review. Marie has updated everybody with the letter regarding what's happening with that. Transportation review, we did meet today to start discussing emailed comments along with forum comments from, from community members and to start formulating a recommendation that will be brought to the entire school committee. We're, you know, working on it. It's, you know, a lot of different moving pieces in it. So it will probably, our goal is to have it by the, I can't remember the date, by the end of...
April 27 meeting.
By the April 27 meeting, is to have a recommendation to school committee for vote. So... Are there any other committees that I've missed?
On transportation, have we surveyed parents to ascertain whether they know what their options are with respect to bus transportation? Have we ever done anything like that? Because from what I'm hearing from some folks is that most people are not aware that bus transportation is available for a fairly reasonable fee. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't done any surveys of parents regarding transportation. The route's been on our website forever. And information regarding eligibility is also there, the fee. And if they live more than two miles and they're above grade six, then, you know, it also talks about how that they could get transportation provided they go to an existing route. Some of the reason why this topic came up was to look at efficiencies in maybe service areas we currently don't have it. So, you know, we're taking in feedback from people, but the information has been on our website every year about routes and any changes and the fee and so on. So for people to say they weren't aware of it, it's available. And so... So for people to say they weren't aware of it, it's available, and so, but we haven't done any kind of survey.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Michelle?
Yeah, I just had a question, since we got a lot of emails on the transportation. Did we respond to them, you know, how is that being handled with you? I saw some of them that we have, and correspondents had responses, you know, that you could see, but otherwise, does somebody take care of that?
I believe Diane, you were?
I responded to all of them, letting them know that we forwarded their emails onto the transportation.
Okay. So they almost acknowledged that they were received?
Okay, so.
In terms of people that had questions, or that, you know, are we going to respond?
I don't know that we had made any plans to answer their questions specifically. The, the open email was to let us know their concerns, questions, or any feedback that they had, so that would all be taken under advisement of the committee. I don't know that we were going to go back and answer each one specifically. I guess that would be a discussion that the committee can have at its next meeting of if we want to go back and personally answer each one.
Okay. I just didn't know if we had sure somebody was taking care of them.
Right, at least, to my knowledge, at least, they've all been acknowledged that they were received and forwarded, so it wasn't just hanging out there that, you know, oh, I sent it an email and, and nobody did anything with it. Kim, did you have something?
Well, I just, because we kind of missed the school committee comments.
Comments? Oh, I'm so sorry.
So one of my questions is with the correspondence, because there was some correspondence that I saw in here that I saw in our packets for the first time, and I hadn't, so when it goes to just our generals, the general school committee email, does it not go to all of us?
What happened with the transportation ones, was I was asked to send those on directly to Transportation Subcommittee, which I did, and then I concluded them in your packets tonight, because they are addressed to school committee.
Right.
So you're getting them so that you're all aware that they were received, and they're recorded as official correspondence.
So when stuff gets sent to the general school committee email, we don't see it until we're getting our packets for the meeting?
Most of it, you do, this was very specific to transportation, so I saw them just in the transportation letter.
Okay.
You could have all of those forwarded if you'd like. That's easy enough to do, if you'd like to receive all correspondence.
I just feel like, yeah, I mean, we, I feel like we should be getting, if it's coming to a school committee.
To the general email address.
To the general email, they're thinking that it, we're all getting it, and then if someone approaches you out and about, oh, did you see my email? Well, no, my meeting's not for another week, so I haven't seen your email yet.
So why aren't we doing that? Just as they come in, forward to everybody.
I don't know, I mean, does that, does that make sense?
Sure, because if you run into someone, they'll wonder why you didn't read it.
Yeah, I would, I don't want to feel like I'm not.
I was already getting them, so if you get them too, that's fine.
See, I don't get them, so. And then I guess my other question was on some of these, we had, like, with the budget thing that we had to approve, not on air and all that.
Right.
And we had asked people for some feedback, and they clearly did send us their feedback. Were we going to, I don't know, have at least a discussion about some of the things that they had talked about, like with, Amy had mentioned something about the, I know that you've got a plan in place for the school psychologist, but I just, she might not know.
Yeah, there were some budget questions.
There were some budget questions, and I'm wondering if we should address them on air so everybody knows, or.
Right, in the open. Marie, if you want to. The emails that we've received that have specific budget.
They were a ton, there were just a few.
Yeah, I've been responding to people that will share that as soon as we know, but some of that is based upon whether or not we redistrict, and in projecting if we are able to successfully redistrict, we should be able to save, reduce the number of classroom teachers we have. We will not be firing people, we will be doing that through attrition, in that we still will have very, very good class size by doing that. So, but I can't say that for now, because I don't know the results of the redistricting committee.
Okay. And then the other one, I think in Amy's letter, was about the adjustment counselors.
At this time.
I don't know if you wanted to talk about that at all.
Yeah, the, at this time, we, we are looking at internal ways to offer more support to kids, but I have a lot of work to do internally with different groups, so I don't have the information for you tonight, but I am continuing to pursue options.
And people should know that that is something that we've got on the top of our.
Yep.
Minds, I guess, as we go through this.
It's not been forgotten.
It's not, the, the.
It's not been forgotten.
Because the, the things that I got questions on were adjustment counselors, and I know that that's not, I guess we should make it clear that it hasn't left our minds until next budget season.
No, no.
No.
And since I did forget school committee comments before, thank you for.
Sorry.
No, 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 I'm just whipping along here. Were there any other school committee comments, you know, to be made, or any, anything anybody wanted to?
I'll make a general announcement, I don't pull up the email.
Okay. I'm not going to sing and dance until you, you know, do that.
Well, I guess, Mike, I do have a question.
Okay. Good, then I don't have to sing and dance and torture people.
No dancing while he's pulling his thing up. I don't know if there's a way that next year we can make the budget process, I know you asked him when he was here earlier for his numbers earlier. It felt very rushed this year, I got it, we got the presentation on Wednesday, and we had to approve it on Monday. Didn't leave a whole lot of time for review questions, or honestly, review of that type of a budget, for someone that's not on the finance committee, and where there's only three members out of the seven not on the finance committee, and the finance committee meetings weren't really posted from the last month, for me to review.
Finance sub minute, minutes?
Sorry, the, I'm sorry, I apologize, I misspoke, the meeting minutes weren't posted for us to review, so that we could see the conversations that had gone on.
Gotcha.
To know the history, like, I really tried to, like, do a little bit of research in those few days that I had, and I couldn't go on that, and then our public forum from the year before was, was missed, unfortunately. So like, I didn't have a whole lot to go back and.
To go back.
And look at, and so.
Tom, do you want to address some of the, some of your part of it, in terms of the timing? Sue, you can't comment.
Yeah, I mean, well, normally, we do it a week before, we did back it up this year from Monday to Wednesday. In the past, it's given the committee a full week.
I saw it from last year, I went and looked.
Historically, that has been the timeframe, would be a week prior to the public hearing, there'd be a formal presentation to the committee, based on everything that has been added or changed in the budget. To allow more time would back up the whole process, meaning we'd have to have it done sooner. We most certainly could look at that. I don't recall why we moved it from the Monday meeting to Wednesday this year.
Weather had backed us up. I was going to say, weather backed us up at the, in the final stages, and with some meetings with, with other entities before being able to, for you to finalize your numbers. I think that was a factor this year, which, you know.
Yeah, I mean, and as Marie mentioned, the collaborative piece this year definitely played a role in not finalizing the numbers, which can have a domino effect on everything else we're trying to include in the budget, depending upon changes in their programs and the costs associated with those. So it's a balancing act, trying to get it done and meet the timelines for both advertising our public hearing, and having those figures set, or at least somewhat set, so that it's a reflection of what's going to be presented to school committee, and that has to be turned in, it's like a week and a half prior to the public hearing date. So it's, it's a challenge, if next year during, you know, before we start the process, we want to try to back it up, we most certainly can have that.
Put some dates in so that we could have the full week.
The other thing would be that we could provide feedback to the select board on the date that they require our budget, and we can ask them to push it back a week.
Yeah, I mean, historically, the calendar at the select board level has been built based on town meeting, back to printing of the law, and back to finance committee receiving it, and select board approving it, so.
And I do know that, you know, when we had the issue with the, the snow and the public forum and everything, unfortunately, budget happens right around our winter break, and they said, well, yeah, the select board had agreed, well, we can, we don't need it by Friday, we can wait until Tuesday. Well, with Monday as the holiday, and that whole week as break, you know, while it was very gracious of them to be willing to back it up for us, it doesn't help when we have families who travel, and the Monday was, in essence, a outlawed day because of the holidays. So, but I definitely hear what you're saying, and maybe we look at it as, let's try to back it up so that we can give members a full week to review the information.
Well, and on top of that, I think it would have been helpful to have it before we were presented, you know, like, I couldn't process that, you know, all that information and have questions for the administration team that was here, so like, if we had it ahead of time, before it was presented to us, and we could look through it, so that we were prepared with questions when they were here, because I had to go home and really come up with my questions, and I could ask Marie, but I couldn't ask some of the admin team that was here, because I got it.
That would be, well, the process in the past would be, we present it, then school committee has their hearing, and then have questions, so they've had a full week to review. An admin team usually comes to the public hearing. To the public forum.
And to answer any questions, school committee would have, they were not there this year because of the weather.
Right.
Only the Department of Public Services. They were, they normally come to both.
To both meetings.
Presentation to the school committee, and then the night of the public forum, and when school committee might have any questions.
Okay. So we'll just make sure that next year, when we're looking at setting dates and meeting dates, that we, you know, barring, you know.
And maybe some updates for those of us that aren't on the budget committee, of things that are big, that will be, you know, I think, when you're doing.
Have we not been presenting that during the finance subcommittee reports?
Not in detail, just that it was being worked on.
I mean, a lot of things were surprised to me, I'd never heard anything about them, so I just, you know. Basically, I got the budget at the same time the public got the budget, and if I'm supposed to be asking questions and whatnot during that session, it's not really.
Well, I don't think that's our session to ask questions, that's when it's first presented.
But it was, this time.
To everyone, and then it would be questions of both the public and the committee are the following week.
Open forum night.
Okay.
It's your memory of it, right? Historically, yeah, I mean, historically, the, we get the presentation, and, you know, it's unfortunately, like, you know, for people like John and I, like, we kind of know exactly where to look in the book to be able to ask the questions right away, but usually that following week, when we have that hearing, that's when we normally would do it, and then we have a second meeting that week scheduled, in case we decide we don't like things in there, or we get feedback from the public that might change our mind about it. Obviously, it didn't happen this year.
So I think this year, you know, was an anomaly, unfortunately, the weather playing a big factor in, in the whole budget process, not just the presentation and the hearing, but, you know, in you getting information and other meetings that you have prior to, you know, with developing the budget. So hopefully, the weather will be more cooperative next year, but I think definitely of making sure that when we're looking, you know, when we're given the directive in October, Tom, of maybe really setting dates, then, and not wavering from them would be more helpful.
It's weather dependent.
Yeah, I can't, we can't control the weather, but at least, I think what we had done with, by moving it back to the Wednesday, instead of having it on the Monday, was to give Tom time to, to finish up and work out all the details, along with the admin team, who put a lot of time and effort into that booklet.
And I do take some responsibility for that time-consuming process, because I did push for that last year. But you do get a lot of compliments on it, Tom, so.
Thank you, it's a team effort, a lot of people contribute to that.
You all, I mean, you all get a lot of compliments from other board members. Finance committee loved it.
Yes, finance committee said that, you know, they're very impressed with what we do, and that they're still working on trying to develop their budget presentation to those same guidelines.
The Town's Finance Committee.
They didn't remember that we, you know, they forced us to do it.
The Town's Finance Committee is taking two years to accomplish what Tom and the whole admin team got together last year, and then reproduced for this year, so. They were very impressed with our, our packet, and the blood, sweat, and tears that went into it, so. But Ben, thank you for bringing that, you know. No, it, don't be sorry, it's, you know, I totally understand where you're coming from, and, and sometimes being, you know, in the forest and can't see the trees, so it's, it's good to be reminded. Any other school committee comments?
Michael, did you get your email?
Did you get your?
Yes, I did, well, actually, no, because it wasn't an email, it was a Facebook invitation, so I had to go on Facebook for it. But Saturday, March 28th, 6 o'clock, the Wolf Swamp Elementary School PTO will be having their annual fundraiser. This year, it is not Dinner with the Stars, much to all of our disappointment, but it actually sounds pretty cool. It is a blues and barbecue event at Twin Hills Country Club, tickets are $50, and can be purchased, I think, at wolfswamp.org. So you have a chance of winning, and I've had two. But more importantly, you know, I think we all come out for all the elementary schools when we can, so I would encourage everybody to go this time as well.
One of my very best friends is the saxophone player that night, and he is awesome.
Yeah.
So you should all come and see him.
And in case you wanted to know, featured music will be by Blueshead and Mark Norman. So this will be fun.
Okay. Do you buy the table, or?
I think we could buy a table.
Yeah, you could buy a table, or I believe you can buy individual tickets, so.
I will say, I do miss comedy night, because they used to go after Marie, like, all the time.
We could rent it.
How much are tickets?
$50.
Kim, did you have something else?
Well, no, I was just going to say, I was at a Wolf Swamp Art Show about a week and a half ago.
Yes, that was.
February.
It was a Wednesday night?
Yes. And I thought it was pretty, pretty cool, and I guess that was a PTO/LEAF sponsored event, so.
Yes, because they had the artists and residents working with the students.
Yeah, they brought in artists at each grade level, worked with the students, showed them the whole process, creative process, and I thought it was pretty cool, so I just, I thought it, Tom, it was pretty cool.
The results of the artists and residents are extremely impressive, LEAF funded the artists and residents, it's great, it was a great, great success.
All righty. So moving along the agenda, we have the 2015-16 school calendar and the 2016-17 school calendar. We had already approved the 2015-16 school calendar on March 24th of last year. However, there has been a proposal to change a professional development day that was originally scheduled for December the 4th, move it to November the 3rd. November 3rd is an election day, the move would allow the district to participate in regional professional development with other area communities who do have that date.
Excuse me, it's not an election day for us.
That's what I said.
It's not, the.
We don't have an election as a town, the 3rd of November, in a five-year.
Some surrounding towns do, though, and they all have it up, so we're trying to collaborate to provide some PBs for our smaller groups, our speechologists, or OTs, PTs, who don't have electricity, to get tons of PBs. So we're going to group together, and we'll put one on, and Ethan Lando will put one on, and him and Graham will put a PB on, so we're hoping to get all the same.
But it's other cities that have.
Yeah, not ours, correct.
Not towns?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So in addition to that, the administration has decided to eliminate the February Late Start Day that was to be piloted this year, that got snowed out. Feedback from parents was overwhelmingly negative regarding a late start versus an early dismissal, so the 2015-16 calendar now reflects that all of those early release days are truly early release, and there will be no late start. So it does require us to vote on moving that professional development day from December 4th to November 3rd. So if we can do that first, and then we can talk about any other.
So.
There you have it.
I just, it's a random day in the middle of the week for parents to take a day off of work, they've already got, they're already having to leave early for Monday's early release, and now they're.
But I think as a general rule, honestly, for the, for kids at center school, having them go to school on election days, even though I know we don't have one this year, is a nightmare. Like, my kids walk to school and they walk through the voting, so even though it's, it might be a pain for the day, I think safety-wise, too, it's a good sort of habit to get into to not have school on election day.
And truthfully, this year, I learned that many school districts do not have school that day, especially because in a lot of districts, they hold their elections in schools.
In the school buildings.
So.
Diane, was there a second to John's motion?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion. Okay, so, we have a motion to approve changing the professional development day from December 4th to November 3rd as presented. Motion and seconded. Any other further discussion about that date? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay. Was there any other discussion regarding the 2015-16 calendar while we are on that calendar? Yes, as you're waving your pencil at me?
I'm sorry, I'm looking... I'm just wondering why or when we got in the habit of having half-days on the 23rd of December for winter break.
As long as I can remember.
Of the 23rd?
As long as...
It started a couple of years ago because it was a Friday, and we thought we would give people travel time to get where they were going.
And I think that a concern that is very realistic is the number of hours that the students are in school. I know this winter is an anomaly, but given the fact that our new...
Normal.
No, not our new normal, our new...
Hour we currently...
No, who is the guy in charge?
Commissioner Chester.
Yes, Commissioner Che... Sorry, Commissioner Chester.
Not so new.
You know, is not planning on giving any waivers, is recommending that the school districts start before Labor Day, and is saying, you know, to be prepared to deal with the issue of snow days because... And to be able to meet not only the 180-day requirement, but the 900 or 990-hour requirement. Given the fact that December 23rd is in the middle of the week, I'm not sure... I understand if it was done when it was a Friday going into a holiday weekend, and you want to give people time to travel. I'm not sure that we need to have it.
Well, at what point, though, can we... Like, we're just kind of extending the vacation back, but why don't we just take a full day on the 23rd, and then we'll give them a half-day on the 26th?
Yeah. I mean, listen, I don't have the stake in this. I'll just put it out there. Don't. Comes to the shock to all of you. But I will say, I mean, like, from my limited recollection of this, those afternoons weren't exactly productive time, so, you know, it's not... I mean, like, meeting hours requirements, you know, hours requirement seems to be like, you know, kind of a...
Well, that can be when their celebrations are versus the morning.
Well, that's what it was.
Right, and, I mean, if you're getting into a situation where, you know, hopefully, we don't have another winter like this, but in case we do, having a little cushion in there versus needing to try to figure out, well, are we going to take away days in a break later on? Are we going to, you know, take away professional development from our teachers, which is so greatly needed?
John?
Yeah, this is a separate question. Has the 2016-2017 calendar been run past the LEA?
We have a calendar committee that meets on this, and it's made up of administrators and teachers.
So, we're not... We're not going to vote to adopt this?
Yeah.
This is proposing, and then we're going to sit down with the LEA to...
We already sat down with them.
For 2016-2017?
Yes.
And they're in agreement?
Yes.
So, are we going to vote on this tonight?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
The only worry is, I did run add up to 900 hours, and we are right at the window right now.
For this year?
For this year.
For 2014-15?
Right, and what the commissioner is saying that... And I worry about that in other years, too. We're down to really tight, so that if we don't have a couple of extra hours built in...
A cushion.
The commissioner is saying people are going to have to go extra hours to make them up. They're going to have to go Saturdays. They're going to have to go vacations.
And he is not...
And he did this before. We had a couple of winters ago where people had to make up. We haven't been in that situation because we go back before Labor Day.
And I do, you know, from reading his article in the paper this weekend, you know, he's not fond of endorsing adding time on to each day to make up all the time lost, you know, saying, oh, we'll add on 10 minutes a day for the rest of the school year. He was very clear that that is not making up educational time.
Yeah, well, you have the two things. You have the 180 days and you have the 900 or 990 hours, so... And we're tight on the elementary hours.
Hours. So, I would... I would like to move... Can I move? I can't move.
Are we still talking about the 15 and 16? Are we still talking about 15-16?
Yes, we're still talking about 15-16 with the half-day on December 23rd.
Can I... I move that we make December 23rd a full day of school?
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that date of changing it from a half-a-day to a full day?
If I could, what's the rationale for that change?
Because we are right near 900 hours, and by doing this, it's... First off, you know, I think the 23rd half-day started, like Marie had said, when the holidays started on the weekend, so that it gave people a chance to travel. If it's on a Wednesday, why, you know, we're having the eve and the day of Christmas off on a Thursday, Friday, it gives us a cushion for the hours for students needing to meet the 900-hour or 990-hour requirement.
Can we put it back to the committee for consideration, you know, before we...
Like, do...
Was it discussed with the committee, that the calendar committee?
Well, I think the calendar committee recommends, and we have the final approval...
They recommend a half-day.
Boom.
But I had not added up to 900 hours at the point on that when we met. I just did that last Friday, and we're down to 901 hours at elementary. So, if we have a winter like this, we would be in a position of not meeting the law.
I guess my question is, can we pose that to the calendar committee and say, we need to find some more hours? What would you prefer, something, you know, like...
Yeah, we can go back to them.
I don't want to make more work. I just... If there were... If there was rationale for that, and they'd rather take some hours from something else than a late start.
Right, I just want to bring up that the contract says the 15-16 school year calendar has to be approved by and in place by March 1st. If you don't want to approve it, and that's your right, we do have to go to the LEA and tell them and ask for...
An extension.
An extension on that date.
But the other question, at least what I'm hearing or kind of interpreting from Michelle is, do we... Since this is a recommendation to the committee, does the committee vote and have a final say, or does the committee have to turn back to the calendar committee?
It's a sensitive issue because this happened before, and the school committee changed the calendar. We did talk about it. I did say I didn't know what would happen with the 23rd because of hours and because of looking into matters. The committee did authorize Kathy and I to be able to talk about this, so I think we'd have to ask for an extension and let Kathy and I have an offline conversation, report back to the time of the calendar. You can choose to put in the calendar that you want because ultimately, you do approve it. It's your final decision, but I did let the teachers know that I wasn't sure what was going to happen with the 23rd.
Well, the question that I have with the deadline being March 1st, if we choose to say this goes back to calendar committee and we'd like an extension, and calendar committee denies the extension, then the calendar gets approved the way it currently is, right?
Right, because you already approved it.
Because we already approved it. So, there's no guarantee that the calendar committee is going to agree to an extension...
So, we can try... We can ask, right?
Well, but this has to be approved by March 1st.
Well, Kathy, do we agree to an extension, and do we need to pull the calendar committee together?
I mean, you approved this once, so you're revisiting it. So, I don't know about an extension, but I also know that what came into the conversation was attendance on that 23rd afternoon, that attendance historically has been dismal. So, you know, I mean, yes, there's maybe a celebration, but...
Can I come up to the mic, Kathy?
Sure.
I think that...
The calendar committee, when they discussed the 23rd, talked about many different things, and we were aware of the hours and the day, but we also looked historically what attendance, and we asked the administrators that were present what attendance was like, and attendance tended to be very low. So, at that point, we were doing kind of one of those, you know, you're in a catch 22. Are you there for 10 kids out of your 22 in a class? You know, and we had that discussion openly.
Why would attendance be low? Everyone's required to be in work that day?
No, it's not staff. Student attendance. Student attendance, not staff attendance. I apologize, a ship and clear. Staff attendance, we're all there.
Yeah, I think there's a difference between, you know, looking at what we're offering to meet the state guidelines of how many hours of education we provide versus what a parent chooses to do.
100%. You know, and I'll go back to, you know, you're asking about an extension. You've approved this once. You are now changing it. That is up to you to make that decision. If you want to override the recommendation of the committee of administrators, teachers, that's up to you as a committee, because you get the final say.
So, what I'm hearing is that there were...
But the committee was not aware that we were at 901 hours at elementary, and that's the law, so this isn't even a matter of...
So, if we have one delay or...
So, if we have one late start, we're out of...
We're out of...
We're going to have to make up hours.
So, no late starts this year, just some...
No, in 2015-16.
Well, no, she said we're at 901 this year, so...
We... For 2015...
Right.
2015-16, that calendar.
901 and a half hours.
You're trying to plan ahead so that if this happens next year, right?
So, for 15-16, for the calendar before you, that's been approved once, elementary is in school for 901.5 hours.
Right, the elementary hours are very, very tight, so...
Wait, so that means that on this calendar, if we have one late... One delay, one two-hour delay, then we have to have a makeup day?
This year, if we have another one, we're going to have to look at making up time.
But on this one...
I'm talking about, wait, depends on how many late starts you have. I had to factor in this year, all the late starts we had because of inclement weather. So, when I checked to see, it's not only we're going to June 24th, I have to check how many late starts we've had and how that cuts back on time on learning, because the kids have to be instructionally in class for the 900 hours, and because we've had so many late starts, we're now at the... We're at a precipitous point where we could go beneath the 900 hours. So, if we did it this year, we could do it another year.
You're talking about 2014-2015? When you talk like that?
I just want to make sure one. Okay. So...
Okay.
So, my concern is, I think the argument is, we absolutely have to add a little bit more fluff time in here, but is that how...
Is that a productive place to work?
I don't know where else you'd get it, Michelle. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I'm not arguing that. I just feel bad because it seems like the administrators and every... I don't want to make that decision. I don't want to overrule them if they have specific reasons for that with the knowledge that I have.
It's cool. It was a nice thing to do, and everyone enjoyed the half-day off, but if you don't have the time, you don't have the time.
Yeah, so I just... I'm wondering if they would take it from another place and if this is the only option.
Could I point out that there's no reason for them, that I can think of, to go for a full day? They've got the half-day already, so why should they vote to give them for a full day?
If we turned it back to the calendar committee?
Yeah.
Right, if it's still turned back.
I can see an LEA member saying, we're going to get paid for a half-day, so why should we work for a full day?
No, they get paid for a full day.
They get paid for a full day.
They get paid for a full day.
They get paid for a half-day as if it was a full day.
Correct.
So, why should we work a full day?
I was asking if they...
Now, I don't want to be ascetic about it, but isn't that kind of...
Let's just put it this way, if we take no action now...
I don't think many of our employees think that way, to be honest with you, John. I mean, we're here, just looking at productive time while we're here.
Yeah, but this is... I agree with your premise. This is not a productive time. I've been in the system for 30 years.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
It's not productive at all to have a half-day.
Yeah, what we're saying is...
Kids don't show up, and what goes on is usually dancing down in the gymnasium.
You can take a chance. Next year will be a better winter.
No, I don't think we should do that. No, I just didn't know if there would be a better place to put more hours.
The only other place would be to take it from professional development time, and I think that would be a disaster. We are so short of meeting time as it is already. I can think of no other place to take it from.
Kim, did you have something you wanted to add?
Because right now, we have the half-day at the end of the year, so we could add a couple of hours there if we do go over the 900... Go under the 900 mark. That's still tight.
Last day of school.
But that's not the time on learning.
Well, that doesn't... That feels less productive to me, just...
Than the day before Christmas Eve.
Than the day before Christmas Eve. But, no, Katie, that's a good question, because I actually...
This is a question, Katie?
No, the 24... When she brought this whole thing up, like, I...
About the hours.
I'm not trying to be a Grinch by any... I'm just thinking, like, fitting it in.
Right, it's hard to, you know, you think as a parent, you know, because we have kids in the system and understanding that, you know, parents may choose to, you know, take off early for plans or whatever, but then we also have to look at it as administratively, we've got to ensure... It's our job to ensure that we provide the number of hours required by law. So, it is a difficult decision, but like Marie's pointed out, there's not a whole lot of fluff in the calendar of where to take things from, not with federal and state holidays.
Can I ask, are we legally obligated to stay closed on days like Veterans Day and Columbus Day? It's a Massachusetts thing?
Yep.
I moved here from a state where we actually... The kids went to school on those days, and they gave them the whole entire week of Thanksgiving off since it was less productive. Because I don't know about you, but my kids, the last two years, those two and a half days, like, there were no spelling things. There were no...
You took into consideration to try to find some time to do that instead.
Yeah, just because...
You know what the answer is? Year-round schools.
Okay, anyway. I mean, any other place to make up that time on my day?
So, we have a motion?
It's half-day there or go full-day last day. Those are the only two areas where you'd really do it, and I would recommend that, so...
All right, so, we have a motion and a second on the table. We've been having discussions, so can we...
So, are we...
Are we ready to vote on changing December 23rd from a half-a-day to a full day in 2015-16? So, all of those in favor of changing it to a full day, full instructional day? All in favor of December 23rd is a full instructional day?
Five.
Four? Opposed? Three? Joseph, you don't have to vote, sorry.
This is like your first meeting.
All right, so, we now have the 2016-17 calendar that we need to approve.
Would you like me to stay here?
Just stay right there. I'm sure there will be questions. I'm sure there will be questions. So I'll just open it up for discussion before even entertaining the motion because I see the pencil waving at me again.
Just the first thing that caught my eye, and I know it's not something that affects the students, but we have a school committee meeting scheduled for Passover, which is not culturally-
My parents will not like that.
No, not cool, so.
For what year are you on?
I'm 17.
How am I supposed to know that's Passover?
Because it's set up.
Well, it's on the 10.
And there's our meeting on the 10.
Got you. We can change our meeting date. Let's look for the educational components.
Yeah. What was the center?
You schedule a school committee on Passover. I know there's only one on the year, but you know.
Hey.
What day does that happen?
It's on April 10.
I was just following the way we've always done that.
No, I'm just giving you a hard time.
Don't move with the good Friday.
So is there any question, comment, changes you'd like to see in the 16-17 school calendar?
Man, we go back early.
I have a question. Well, Labor Day's late.
Do you have no school in the town?
No, no.
Flagging that there's a school committee meeting scheduled for that.
I have a question.
That will have to change in years.
So does this, if we, by approving it today, does it leave room for the possibility, because this is like two years away, of the state of Massachusetts going from no February and April and just a March break?
There are a lot of surveys going back and forth right now. They're coming from the commissioner's office. Superintendents have had to fill one out, MASC's doing one. So there's a lot of buzz about it, but it's come up before. We'll see where it goes.
But does this, like, if we approve this 2016-2017 calendar today, does this, does that leave us in a bad spot needing to adjust when other, if other districts move to that whole if they?
Yeah, you have to revisit it. It's a big if. You have to revisit it. This one's not as critical. By contract, we just have to approve next year. You don't have to approve this one tonight.
This one is for LHS, right?
They need this for Symphony Hall just to know the last day because that's enough information, right?
Well, it was, yeah, we looked two years out at the request of the high school predominantly because of them being able to set their senior activities, which was very, very important to them.
And I think, I believe Connecticut is moving to changing their calendar, and they're doing it as a statewide initiative where they're getting rid of February and April and consolidating to March, and it's a two-year rollout plan.
They didn't have February break this year, did they?
No.
That was for different reasons, though, I think.
Joseph?
I don't know if we're discussing not doing two-year calendars, but as an officer, we found it really helpful.
No, I think, I think we want to keep doing the two-year calendar. I think the question just is if the state is going to seriously look at eliminating two breaks and consolidating to one.
I just don't think that they can.
That's just kind of, I think that before they, even if they were, even if Desi was to mandate or the legislature was to mandate it, I think the MTA would sue, and then it would end up in the Supreme Judicial Court because there's labor agreements in place that specify the dates of these vacations.
Oh, so it would be, probably have to be the same thing as Connecticut, like a rollout?
A rollout.
And not all districts in Connecticut are doing that, just because my second job is in Connecticut and I run camps on our vacation time, and there are many districts still that have the full break, some shortened February. If you were going to ever look at that, you should probably look at the amount of sickness right before February break. It's always very nice to kind of clear the germs out of the air in February.
Isn't that why you have February break so that we can, like, get them away from the close quarters?
Initially, yes, and it has remained so. It always finds that those few days before February, the, you know, the sickness rate is just awful, and it's just kind of nice, as I said, and even kids coming back in, they'll be like, "Oh, I was sick on vacation." You feel real bad, you know, but it's-
But no, but that's, you want them to be sick.
You want them at home. I would approve it because state law would supersede anything we do anyway, so if they change it, we would be mandated to change our calendar.
But I would think, Kim, what you said-
We have to go back, but it would have to be an impact bargain, and we'd have to go through all that, just to be honest with you.
Yeah, so we would have to do a little less of a thing.
I asked J.C. case.
Just wanted to ask the question.
Sure, go ahead.
And so now we're going to look at that December 23rd since the Friday?
Well, this one, I feel like a Friday is a little bit more reasonable.
Yeah.
It's a shorter break. It's just a Friday, I feel like is-
Well, but do we have the same problem that we-
I don't think so because it's, Labor Day's late, so we go back so early.
It's just, it will be the same problem for elementary. It depends what happens down the road.
But does it, if we go back so much earlier, Marie, does it, is it just, we just go back a day or, like, August 31st?
It won't matter. It just depends how many snow days, how many late starts we have. The calendar doesn't change at all. It's if you have a significant number.
I don't work at all until December.
I would suggest that you keep them the same. You can always revise it next year if we find out that things change and there's more time in elementary. But based on what I know right now, the time is too tight.
Can I ask why, if it's possible, maybe, the only other times that we have the half-days for elementary conferences, would it be possible to consolidate, like, to have one half-day for conferences?
And two evenings?
And two evenings?
I think that would be easier for parents.
Yeah, that would have to be negotiated.
What, is that, okay.
But maybe that, you know, that's the kind of thing I was talking about for 15-16, in case that would have worked out. I don't mean to reopen it, but I, you know, in case that would be more desirable.
That would give you a couple more hours. I don't know if it's something that we want to talk about or not.
Because that's part of the contract.
You'd have to negotiate it, yeah.
So that could certainly be something that's brought up as we're negotiating now, moving forward.
But we could ask the teachers what's more important. Would they rather two-evening or would they rather keep it as-is and go the full day on the 23rd? Because that would pick up a couple of hours that would give you a little bit of buffer.
Can we do that for the 15-16, even though we just voted on it? That was the kind of thing I was saying, let's ask them and see.
That has to, but it has to be approved by March 1st. So we're going to have-
Not this, I know, I know, but I'm saying-
Michelle's asking back to the 15-16. Could we go back and ask them to revisit it now and to get the union to-
Well, you already voted on it.
You already voted on your 15-16 calendar.
Right.
But Michelle's wanting to open it up to revote, to let them have the option to change parent conferences for 15-16 as opposed to taking away the 23rd, and I was just saying that we've got, we've got, what, six days in order to get it approved?
Even then, I mean, your timeline's probably not realistic for that, right?
What would that be?
To get calendar committee back together to agree on changes of conferences.
Well, what would they rather? Have their recommended calendar changed or maybe reconvene and look and see if there was something else to add more time in? I guess that's what I'm looking to.
I think that always, if you're going to involve the stakeholders, you're always going to be better off to let somebody have a say rather than override what has been recommended to you. That's just how I work, you know, to reconvene. I know they have given Marie and I some leeway as far as us being able to work a little bit away from the committee, if need be as well. We can reconvene. I think we can get most people, what is it, March 1st, though? No, that's Sunday. That's, that's a short timeline. For the 15-16, you're better off probably staying where you are, in my opinion, and then whatever you want to do with 16-17.
Well, we have plenty of time with that, but I would definitely send it back to them with their input.
And since we're still in negotiations, we can certainly bring it up to the negotiating team of, you know, offering that as an option because that is something that's negotiable.
What would that be?
The half-day conferences. Is that not part of the contract?
It is.
Right, so that would be, have to be something negotiated to ask that the elementary-
Yeah, but me, Kathy and I can do that offline without the whole committee. We do a memorandum of understanding, but she would talk to her people, tell me whether or not it's even something worth considering. So that's not normally a change like that. We don't normally, Brian.
Okay, so that would be-
It is in the middle of negotiations. I don't know if you prefer, which route you'd prefer to go.
Well, that would be something that you two can certainly talk about. But I think the recommendation would be to saying, instead of two half-days for elementary conferences, of saying one half-day and then one whole day, and instead of conferences being two half-days during the school day and one evening conference, it'd be one set of conferences during the day and two evenings.
So you're going to bring your teachers back an extra night? Is that what you're saying?
That's what Michelle's proposing.
Well, I'm asking that we'd rather that than lose a half-day or something like that, do you know what I mean?
I think that, you know, I mean, my teachers also could look at the feasibility with all the grades being on Power School, too. Is such, is enough time allotted for, is there too much time, not enough time allotted for conferences, too? You know, parents have-
I think we're just talking elementary, and Power School isn't elementary.
And elementary needs all that time because they see every parent.
They do.
Can I ask, just to, I don't mean to like harp on the parent-teacher conferences, but they're awesome, I love them, but why do we do the elementary and then a week later we do the middle school? Because having a kid in each, that is really tough to have, like, two half-days for the elementary kid and then the next week, two half-days for the, sort of juggle.
It's historically been done. I don't know why they did that.
Well, I think, number one, they've done it differently, too, but also now with the middle schools being on trimesters, that's changed a little bit about when the middle school conferences are. Now that Glenn, Brooke and Williams are more aligned time-wise, too. So I think before, when we weren't on trimesters or they kept the quarterly schedule for the middle school conferences, they were closer together. But at that point, you know, you kind of want them somewhere near term-end.
Yeah, and what, can we, would it be possible to, like, in October, the 20th and the 21st are middle school conferences, and then-
Or elementary.
Elementary, and then the 27th and 28th are middle school.
Is that because some staff serve both buildings? Historically, why would that have been done?
Historically, I believe that's probably why.
Because your adjustment councils go between two, but you may have some key players that have to be at both meetings, but it would be, just be adjustment councils, really.
And I also think the community at one point didn't want, and I say this politely, all the children at the shops at the same time when friendlies used to be here and stuff. I think that they were kind of doing damage control, and I'm being honest, having been here 28 years in the system.
We always have to be in the business.
Little peach.
It was in all these two.
Little peach, wow, memories.
I mean, having grown up here as well, it was historically, I think that's where-
Just to try and add the, is it, do you think it's still an issue? Is it something that we can work on? Yeah.
That's why we were trying to do that.
I can say historically, we didn't want them all at Starbucks either.
There's not much left of the shops to, like, elementary schoolers, like friendly is supposed to be.
Used to be too friendly.
Maybe when the shops expand, there'll be more places for them to go, and it won't be an issue.
I know it's nitpicky, it's just, I dread those. Sorry.
I think we just approve this as it is, and if we have to fix it, fix it.
All right, so can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Are we changing the 23rd? No, we're leaving it as it is for now.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Clarify the motion. What are we leaving as?
For 2016-17 school calendar as it is presented.
Okay, what if we're short of time that year again?
We'll have the same conversation here from now.
Well, I think, I thought you guys were going to discuss how we could make it, you know, what would be, what would the teachers prefer so that we can amend it, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't vote on this calendar till we have that discussion.
I was just going to say, why don't we just say-
We'll table the vote until there's further discussion between administration and the LEA to determine-
Is that screw with the high schools reserving at Symphony Hall?
No, because the end date won't change. It's just what we do to make sure we hit that 900-hour mark.
Can we show the high schoolers so they can make their-
Yeah, Paul will do that. So the framework's good, it's just the question of the half-days.
If you get this draft nice and properly, then we'll have no problems booking that years.
Okay. He said he'd ask on the draft, and you're not going to book it.
Correct. We're going to table the vote until there's been time for discussion between the calendar committee and administration.
Or Kathy and Marie.
But our vote about 10 minutes ago-
Was for 2015-16.
I thought we were voting on Friday the 23rd.
For 2015-16.
Which was not Friday the- No, it was Wednesday.
It was a Wednesday.
It was a Wednesday.
John, we already did the motion.
Well, okay.
The one concern I have about that vote is you've changed a calendar that's been published a year. If you have a staff member that has already documented flights, because some of the flights can go, you know, a year or more in advance, then, you know, you've made a change that's already been published. And that would be something, Marie, just to bring to your attention now as a heads-up. Because this is something that has been published and approved. So, you know, by changing the game a little bit, there may be an anomaly here or there, but I figure I'd just rather be proactive than reactive and throw that out there for you.
Can I admit publicly, I thought we were voting on the 2016-17, Friday the 24th. That's what I voted, 23rd.
Or didn't vote for?
And I thought you guys voted four to three to go for a full day on the 23rd Friday.
We were, that vote was for the 2015-2016?
Yeah, but I thought it was the 2016-17.
So you're discounted?
I have no interest in changing the Wednesday of the December 15th.
That's how you voted?
That's how you voted.
No, I'm telling you, I did not vote for that. I voted, I was under the impression I was voting for this 16-17.
Are you against it on both calendars? Changing the time?
I'm against it. I think we should have a full day on the 16-17, December 23rd. Fine for me on the half-day for the 15-16.
Wow.
I think that's how you voted.
That is how you voted.
That's how you voted.
You voted to keep the half-day on the 2015-16 calendar for the Wednesday, the 23rd?
Ooh, I didn't.
So John was confused?
I didn't. I was under the impression I was voting 16-17.
Okay, but John, if we-
Well, you can't say what works out. Okay, fine.
Can we make a motion to reopen the vote?
I thought we were keeping 2015-16 as-is because it's been published.
And I, I make a motion to change, to redo the vote.
Motion to reopen discussion.
So I don't know what Robert's going to-
Well, my position is, here, to clarify, I think 2015-16 has been broadcast, it's been out there, then let's leave it as-is.
Let's, everybody pause for two seconds. We're going to just look at the handbook on how we reopen this, and then we can vote appropriately, and then we'll move forward.
The vote I reported, do you want me to read when I recorded? The recorded vote was to move the December 23rd, 2016 to a full day. And the vote was four in favor of that.
Fifteen. You're saying the wrong date.
It's 15. 15, 15, 2015, December 23rd, to make that a full day. It was four in favor of to make it a full day and three against to make it a full day. So the vote passed. You did make it a full day of school.
They did make it a full day.
But it was a split decision, just so you know that. It wasn't unanimous.
But it was four-three.
Four-three, and you voted against making it a full day.
Correct.
Okay.
Except I thought we were talking about Friday.
I understand.
Okay.
All right, I just wanted to-
So is your vote the same? So are you in favor of fuller day or half-day on the 15th?
The 23rd of 2015, the Wednesday.
I'm in favor of the half-day.
So that's how you voted?
That's how you voted.
Yes.
So we're okay?
Okay.
No, but you guys voted to change it.
I'm, and I think I'm confused.
Right, your vote was four-three.
Yes.
All right, why don't we just, can I-
What I'm trying to get at is, aren't we going to open, we're opening up 15-16 when it's boarded, isn't it? Isn't it?
No, it's not. Well, Kathy just said teachers have flights and-
It was, it was brought forth, John, that the calendar committee wanted it amended to change their professional development day. Since they opened it up to be amended, that's when we asked about the half-day before Christmas in light of the number of hours the students are going to school regarding late starts, delayed starts because of weather and snow days. and snow days. So since it was already opened up by the calendar committee's request to change their professional development day, that added, that allowed us to have further discussion on any amendments that we wish to, excuse me, make to that calendar. And the vote on that was four in favor of changing the 23rd from a half day to a whole day, Wednesday, the 23rd, and three opposed. And you were part of the opposed.
Correct.
Then we've moved on to the 2016-17 calendar, which is what we've been talking about. And it's been recommended to table the vote until Kathy and Marie can discuss options for how to address the time for late starts and snow days. Because that calendar, 2016-17, does not need to be voted on tonight. 2015-16 had to be voted on before March 1st. So that's why we had to...
And so we voted to change. So that means we're gonna have to have a meeting. The calendar committee's gonna have to meet.
No, we have the final say-so on the calendar. School committee has the final approval on the calendar.
Well, we got in a lot of trouble, and Tom, maybe you could correct me on this, when a former chair of the school committee came in and said, "I don't like the Labor Day agreement," and without telling some of us who were new to the committee, "I'm not approving it." Do you remember this?
Yes.
And it was, I think we, it cost us court costs. Because we tried to override what was an established protocol for the way things should be done. And I'm in favor of maintaining the protocols of how things are supposed to be done. I don't want this committee picking up a $10,000 fine or labor cost.
My recollection of that, though, John, was that the committee adopted a calendar that had not already been vetted through the calendar committee. That's not what's happening here. The committee is voting to change a calendar that the calendar committee has already agreed on and brought forward to the school committee for consideration. The school committee has final say on adoption of the calendar by contract.
But the superintendent at that time did not raise an objection to what the then chair was irate about.
John, I was explicit at calendar committee that I did not know which way school committee would go because of the time. And when I, after that meeting, went and calculated the time on learning, we are critically close to not making 900 hours at the elementary school. So, so at this point, I can't recommend to you not, I can't recommend a half day because we may not, we could put ourselves in a position of not having enough face time with kids and have to add schedules, add time onto learning at other points in the school year.
May I make this suggestion? Because I know you probably want to get out of here before midnight. Why don't, you've already dealt with the 15-16 calendar.
And we're tabling the 16s...
Tabling 16-17, why don't we go back to the committee with it? Because there's no rush for that. It doesn't have to be done by this Sunday like the 15-16 does.
Yep, right.
We can go back, leaving the skeleton in place, the framework in place, so that the high school can make their graduation prom dates, et cetera, et cetera. Because I think that's important, but I don't, because I don't believe the beginning date and end date are going to change. Just the inner workings of that.
Maybe they have suggestions on how we can meet the 900 hours and really reach that critical point. So we're happy to do that, but based on what we know tonight, I recommend you hold with the vote you had.
Okay. Do we need to approve anything for the framework of a start date and end date so that the high school can plan their graduation, secure their graduation prom venues, et cetera?
I think you've enough of a framework. Nobody here is talking about changing that. We're just, all we're talking about is would we flip a half day? So I, I think Paul Dunkley has enough information to book Symphony Hall.
Okay.
Nobody's planning on talking about the start before Labor Day, right?
No.
So we'll be okay?
No, we weren't talking about any of that.
Yep, so we're okay.
Would we be able to sign a contract?
Okay, so we are tabling the vote.
It's more just about the half days, that's the only...
Okay, that's on public record now, just letting you know, so that he can make the contracts.
Yes, yes, just what I wanted to make sure that the...
I just want to make sure, you know, Mr. Dunkley can make his arrangements as needs be.
Absolutely. Thank you. Moving on to preschool rate. The finance subcommittee considered the preschool rate for 2015-16 and are recommending no change. The rate increased in 2014-15 to $2,000 for the year with a $50 discount offered if the full year's tuition was paid by September 1st. Can I have a motion?
Sure. I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee set the tuition rate for 2015-16 school year to $2,000 and offer a $50 discount if tuition is paid in full by September 1st, 2015.
Can I motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion about this? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? No, everyone was in, was it a unanimous vote?
Yeah.
The finance subcommittee also considered the tuition rate for the 2015-16 school year.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee set the, set the tuition rate for out-of-state students for the 2015-16 school year at $13,450.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question.
Michelle?
Does that cover our costs?
The amount is reflective of the per student expenditure for the fiscal year 2013, which was the most recent information that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had available at the time the finance of committee recommended it. And that is what the law allows, that you can charge up to your per student expenditure.
Any further discussion? My question too. All right, so all those in favor? In our packet, we have a letter from Minister and Mrs. Paulo Ferrer? Ferrera, okay, of Enfield requesting to have their daughter accepted as a tuition-paying student for grade nine for the 2015-16 school year. Mr. Tom Landers, principal of Long Meadow High School, has reviewed her records, interviewed her, and is recommending her acceptance to the Long Meadow Public Schools.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee accept Megan Ferrera of Enfield, Connecticut as a tuition-paying student beginning in 2015-16 school year in grade nine at Long Meadow High School.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question. So this is new to me. Is this something that we offer anybody to come to?
Out-of-state only.
Correct. If you live in Massachusetts, you have to attend school in your community where you live unless you are a member of, say, the school choice program.
Metco.
Metco. But this is only for students who live out of state.
Historically, we never really have more than one or two at any given time. I don't think we have one right now.
We do not.
I think we've had one since 2011.
Why is it that, like, East Long Meadow couldn't come if they wanted to?
The law does not afford for students from another Massachusetts community unless it's through one of those programs.
Got it.
Which we'll be adopting next.
Any further discussion about these tuition requests? All right, call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay. For school choice, 2015-16, the administration is recommending accepting school choice students at the kindergarten level only. This past year, we accepted four students in the full-day kindergarten program and making the same recommendation for 2015-16.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee...
Nope, administration, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right. I move on the recommendation of the administration that the school committee accepts students in the school choice program for the 2015-16 school year as follows. Grade level, kindergarten, full day, number of seats, four. Acceptance into the school's choice program will entail parents of those students pay the $2,750 fee associated with the full-day kindergarten program.
Can I motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I'll second it, but I have a question. That's the fee that we're charging for the full-day kindergarten. In the past, didn't school choice just come in without a fee?
Not in the full-day program. They were required to pay the tuition similar to a Long Meadow resident. In the past, we have opened up some slots in the half-day program for kindergarten, but like...
Is the school choice program only for full day?
No, the committee has to stipulate where they're opening seats.
Based on the motion I just made, the answer is yes. It's only for full day.
So we could have said they can be in the half-day kindergarten program without a fee?
Correct.
And may I ask why we're not saying that?
Do we know if there will be a half-day program next year?
It gives us some money, I know.
We don't know whether or not there will be a half-day program, but this year we only have one section. And by adding four more slots, it most certainly could impact the size of the class. So knowing that we have seven full day, or eight full-day sections this year, gives us a little more latitude on placement of those students without impacting class size.
So that's not gonna get us in a contradiction with the state law?
It will not.
School choice, okay, fine. Thank you.
Can someone explain to me now what the school choice is? That's from out-of-state still?
No, school choice allows students in neighboring districts or in sort of neighboring districts.
Massachusetts district.
Massachusetts to apply for admission to neighboring, to other school districts. That other school district pays their tuition essentially, or their per pupil cost up to a certain amount every year. So historically, this committee, why we still carry a little bit of a reputation, it used the school choice, admitted a lot of students, kindergarten, first grade, sixth grade, ninth grade. And that's great, and it certainly did a lot for the district. But sometimes when those students graduate out, there becomes a plateau and you lose that revenue. So it put us in not a great financial situation, which is why we accept smaller numbers these days. So school choice students, like I said, they typically come, we get them Springfield, Agawam, West Springfield, East Slum, not really East Long Meadow, one, one.
Not only...
Yeah, so...
Is it a lottery as well? Like, we just get, you know, we open it, we get applications and then pick out of a hat, basically?
That is correct. We will post on the website that there's an application and a deadline for submission. And then we, we will have a lottery, usually the chair, the committee, myself and Diane meet and place all the applications out, and the chair randomly picks from that pile to fill the slots.
They're all face down.
And how many, typically, how many applications do we get?
Thirty, 35 or so.
And the town that the child is in that's coming in here pays our per pupil cost?
All the less.
Pays $5,000. The maximum amount for regular education is $5,000 for the school choice program. So their state funding, chapter 70 money gets reduced by the number of students of their district that are enrolled in the choice program and attending school in another district. And then we receive funding from the state for the number of kids we have currently, about 45 students that are here in Long Meadow through the choice program.
Has it ever been merit-based or anything instead of lottery?
No, the law specifies that it's lottery. The only exception is that for siblings of students already here through the choice program, they have a sibling, if they're coming into a grade where their slots have been approved by the school committee, they receive preferential treatment. So they get the slots first before you do a lottery.
Okay. And we'll get to decide where these four seats go, correct? In terms of the redistricting and everything, we'll get to say where we have room for them?
The administration has decided that in the past, correct.
Need further discussion?
So the town they're coming from is the...
And, and is there any reason why it can't be more than the 2,750 since we're subsidizing some?
Is there any reason why it can't be more than the fee that we're charging for Long Meadow students? Is that what you're asking, Lee?
Right, yes, because, you know, part of that, we're, we're using our own budget for, to subsidize it, I'm assuming.
Well, I think you'd be looking at an issue where you are charging students in that program more than you're charging residents to attend the program. So I think it could be looked on as not being fair, inequitable. Yeah, so I would say there could be an inequity issue.
Gotcha. I just didn't know, since we're allowed to charge tuition...
The out-of-state tuition is much more flexible than the choice program.
Okay. This is, for school choice, there has to be a reason why they're not being in their town.
No, there doesn't.
No?
It is purely just an application and a random draw process.
And might be on their way to work.
They just...
But like, 2,750 is not the per pupil rate for that kindergarten program.
The choice law is not dictated by the per pupil expenditure amount. The out-of-state tuition program is.
And does the, their city where they're coming from will still pay the fee for them to attend in school choice?
No.
$5,000.
Right, so really, it's their...
Right, it's up to their family, it's their state that they're...
But they still, so it's not just the 2,750 that we're sort of receiving on as tuition, it's really the seven...
Right. The thought is that these are open slots, so it's not costing the district additional money to allow these slots to be filled with students from another district. So you don't need to necessarily charge the full per student expenditure amount because these slots, they're vacant anyways. You have the capacity in the district to allow the students to attend.
We have to have a certain number of slots for school choice?
School committee makes that determination.
We do it because it promotes diversity in the town. We don't have as much diversity. So by opening up Metco seats in school choice, we really increase that and bring that nice experience to our kids. But there are always open slots, we're not adding teachers. If a student is special education in school choice, then Springfield would pay a year out with their special education costs.
And like I said, historically, you know, at least the last, at least six years, the committee has made a very conscientious decision to open up a smaller number of slots instead of a greater number of slots, and primarily in the first in kindergarten levels, more recently just in kindergarten. So...
If I could, just, this was passed when Governor Weld was in power. And it's been, part of his general drift, which eventually led towards charter schools. You're robbing Peter to pay Paul. You're taking $5,000 away from, say, Chickaby or Springfield, giving it to Long Meadow. In the case of a student coming from Chickaby or Springfield.
Right.
Okay. That was very nice of the governor. He didn't do any, any heavy lifting for that one. But be aware, it's, you're taking money away from another district.
It's also costing us to have a child.
And Long Meadow likes it because you don't have to raise taxes that much. Is that part of the reason we accepted it? Okay? We are on a little history.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I just, I get on, I don't understand the logic of why it can only be 2,750 versus 5,000.
Because that's the amount that the committee approves for a full-day kindergarten. So that's the amount applied to...
We're charging our residents. We can't bill them more than what we charge the residents of the community, basically. Right. They really become our, they really become our students, and they are earned every right that our students would have. So we use that to move the program.
There is one kicker to those in there, because some of these might come with special needs requirements, thereby increasing their costs for...
Correct.
Our costs for educating them.
And they're sending district, too, because there's an incremental bill back to the district in which they reside.
Yeah, Marie just said that, right?
Yeah, it's a year after, it's, follows a year, second year that they're here.
Very smart.
And once they're here, they stay here for the remainder of their education, unless they move out of state. But they remain a Long Meadow student till they graduate.
And they don't pay in subsequent years?
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah, if we didn't charge for full-day kindergarten, then they wouldn't be charged.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have a vote? All those in favor? The lottery for Metco seats will be done April of 2015. Available seats will be filled at random by grade level. Currently, there are 37 Metco students in Long Meadow. Four of the Metco students are seniors. So the administration is recommending the acceptance of four Metco students at the kindergarten level only. School placement will be determined by the administration at a later date.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee accepts students in the Metco program for the 2015-2016 school year as follows. Grade level kindergarten, grade level number seats, kindergarten, full day, four.
John, might I just ask that you amend that to the recommendation of the administration?
Okay.
It's not the finance, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion about Metco lottery?
I feel bad that Sandy's been here this late.
Oh, I'm enjoying it a bit.
Just real minute.
She's sitting and it's quiet.
We all were.
Relatively. All right, any further discussion on Metco? All right, seen none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I was gonna ask, is it the same random selection? Mr. Clark said no.
They register in Springfield, and Springfield holds a lottery. And it's a digital lottery. And there is, there's no provision for siblings. I think choice has some provision for siblings.
All right, so can we move on to the warrants?
Yes, okay. I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the school lunch fund FY15 dated February 27, 2015, in the amount of $63,081, 68 cents.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Okay, I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2772 of the general operating fund FY15 dated February 27, 2015, in the amount of $341,171 and 75 cents.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? All right, we do have a consent agenda.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the February 23, 2015 school committee...
What?
Yeah, meeting as presented. I forgot it was February.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? We do have minutes, and I would recommend that for executive session minutes, they be approved but not released.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the executive session for February 9, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
I was embarrassed.
Abstain?
I'm abstaining.
One.
Not two.
Two. Didn't you say one? Oh, I thought you raised your hand. One, just Michelle.
I was abstaining too, because I wasn't there.
John and Michelle are both abstaining.
I was just saying there was one abstention, that's all.
You're not abstaining.
Well, I'm speaking for myself, I didn't know.
Now speak for me, too.
That makes two.
Is that what engaged in the article, it's like?
Okay, keep going.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the February 9, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? One.
Are you abstaining?
Okay, let Katie read now.
I'm good. Go ahead, Michael, you're doing an excellent job.
What did I say?
Nothing, you're doing great.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the February 4, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the executive session for the January 26, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
Motion, do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Opposed, abstained?
And I move, in a strange turn of events, that the school committee approve the minutes of the February 10, 2014 school committee meeting as presented. Why, you ask, they weren't approved last year.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
I think it says 26.
He skipped the j- I know, no, we gotta go back to do the 26th.
Oh, I'll go back to that, but I was distracted.
So we're on the February 10, 2014, as presented, motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
And last but not least, I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the January 26, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
And, uh, you want to move?
All right, yes, please.
I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session for the purposes of strategies related to collective bargaining with Unit A to reconvene into open session. This motion requires a roll call vote.
Could we not move to return to open session?
You'd like me to strike that?
I would like you to strike that and start over again.
Let me, let me begin again?
Thank you.
I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session for the purposes of bargaining as it relates to- Yeah, strategy, as it relates to bargaining with Unit A, not to reconvene into open session.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you very much. We will see you again in March.
You're lucky.
Have a great evening.
Bye, Kathy.
Stay warm.
Bye, thank you.
Nice break, yeah.
There will be school tomorrow.
No, all right, what if we get a-
There were delays, but, you know.
Here's the thing is, she doesn't need to.
We, we can't have, according to room, we can't have an hour delay because we'll be at 9:00.
It's a basic watch.
Forty-five minute delay.